Need to be like on Air Media One or anything like that?
Fixed it.
All right, we have 7:00 PM. Let's go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call and we'll go around the room and then we can do the guests.
Sarah Darning.
Kristy Van Meter.
Lauren Taismiller.
Sheila Mengers.
Sarah Sanders.
Rocky Booznitz.
Christina Flamming.
Rosa Cavassos.
Tiffany Kinch.
Stacy Bell.
Rebecca Hummer.
Matt Hirsch.
Kristen O'Brien.
Buck Ruder.
Micah Steagle.
Shannon O'Connor.
Tucker Petticord.
Katie Bivens and Parker Bivens.
Scott Dial.
Kirsten Berwirt.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to see, has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? If so, I would accept a motion.
Second.
Motion by Christina, second by, was that you Rosa?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Six, oh, all opposed? Any opposed? Six-zero. Okay, we will go ahead and move on to the minutes from the November 17th meeting. Are there any questions or amendments? If not, I would accept a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Motion by Rosa, second by Christina, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Okay, we will now move on to communications status of the district. And we are starting this evening with Mrs. Berwirt.
We also had a drive-through school-wide Veterans Day Parade that's kind of become a favorite for staff, veterans, and students. And it was really exciting to do that. And so just lots of fun things related to Board Goal Six. During November, we also actively addressed Board Goal Three and worked to build both our clothing closet and a food closet. We had a little grade-level competition and we collected 2,329 items of food. And our PTO was tremendously helpful in boxing up food. We sent out an online form and if families needed food, we, our PTO just came on Thursdays, boxed it up, and families came and picked it up on Fridays. And it was just a really great way for all of our staff and students to support those of us that have some food needs. I was really excited and proud of our staff for that. In looking ahead, our team will be actively working on Board Goal One and strengthening our instructional strategies as we will begin the recertification process for Quantum Learning Distinguished School. And we'll begin that this January. This would include a professional development experience for our certified staff. And this will focus on engaging instructional strategies for the next 12 months, so all of the 2026 school year. Each month, staff will have one to two areas that they'll really focus on. They'll collect artifacts. And then they'll reflect with their teammates to discuss the impact on students. At the end of our time, we will have exit interviews with all of our staff and then we'll have a Quantum Learning Distinguished School showcase. What questions can I answer at this time?
Can you describe your definition when you say artifacts?
Sure, sure. So an artifact could be a picture of a teacher using an instructional strategy such as a song. It could be a video. It could be a lesson, a copy of a lesson plan. Just any evidence that the teacher is actually implementing the instructional strategy.
Yep, great question. Any other questions? I have one. When you do the showcase at the end, is that something that the community attends?
So that is, that is something that we are still in the discussions about. I would love for the community to be involved because we want to celebrate. It's a really big deal. So to be continued on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and as a parent of a child and also the daughter-in-law of a veteran, I know that that is a favorite for them. My father-in-law always loves getting to come and do the drive-through, so thank you for continuing to host that.
Absolutely. It's our pleasure.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Bivens.
All right, good evening. Katie Bivens, proud principal of Tecumseh North. I just have three things to talk to you about. Mrs. Kress and I are gearing up for our February evaluation, Certified Staff Evaluations. We are starting our formal observation process with those staff members. I believe we each have eight, so 16 total that will be evaluating and observing first and then evaluating, which aligns with Board Goal Number Five. The second thing is our two avid site team co-chairs, Mr. Eccleberry and Mrs. Holtcamp, attended an avid showcase school in Wichita on November 19th. And we meet every month as an avid site team and we're going to meet, have our monthly meeting next week. And we'll get to hear what they learned about. They went to first middle school and then an elementary school. And hopefully use their ideas as well as feedback that we received from our October PD to get ready for our January PD. December is a busy month. We have a lot of things coming up school-wide. We have our fifth and sixth grade will have their music concert next week. And then our Inner Murals program will also have a fundraiser that same night at Sweet Tea. So if you're interested, stop by Sweet Tea that night and any of, a certain percent of the proceeds will go to our Inner Murals program. On, the next week is a very busy week. On the 15th, our preschoolers are going to have a small, little music program at 6:00 o'clock at our school. And then we will have our Tecumseh North Express, TAN Express where Santa will come. And the PTO has different stations set up for students to make ornaments, write letters to Santa, see Santa himself. And our sixth-grade leadership team will help with those different activities. On the 17th, the fifth and sixth graders will have their band and orchestra concert here at the high school. And then lastly, we will wrap up the semester and the second quarter on the 19th with our sing-along. We'll have our school-wide sing-along at 1:45. And then the parties will follow after that at 2:30. So that's what we've got going on right now at Tecumseh North. Any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dial.
Good evening. I just have two things. One, having the elementary students help out with the elf performance was amazing. It gave those kiddos a lot of confidence around the school. At morning assembly, we were able to bring them up and announce them, put them on our Facebook page. So kudos to Mr. Boyer for connecting with the elementary kiddos. And also I think it helps give them something to look forward to as they get into middle school and high school as well and make those connections. Secondly, goes Board Goal Number Five where district administrators will proactively attract and retain the highest quality staff. Just some HR good news because I feel like it's one of those things, kind of like IT. Sometimes you don't talk about it unless something's going wrong. But, so I just want to pull up a few stats, but today we had eight to 10 teachers and classified staff that were absent. Whether it was the weather, being out of town, being stranded, already had family engagements, but we had zero unfilled jobs. So a few years ago, that would not have been the case. So the steps that the board and the HR crew have taken have greatly benefited. And we saw that today. Next, something that has changed over the years are hiring 19- to 23-year-olds to work at Tecumseh South. We currently have eight former T-South alum or Shiny Heights grads that you say they're in a gap year. They're trying to figure out what they're wanting to do, but some just enjoy working with kids and enjoy being a literacy tutor or a para. And it used to be most of our classified staff were parents who won the same hours with their kids and enjoyed working with kids. But now we're starting to target high school grads and they do a wonderful job. They build excellent relationships with their kids and do an awesome job. So HR, and I do feel like as a school district comparatively, like our classified state pay is solid. I mean, it's never enough like when you get into education, but compared to other districts, we don't pinch pennies when it comes to pairs and literacy tutors and that. So I feel like that's something we can be proud of as a district too. But any questions about any of that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Okay, we'll move on to comments and concerns from patrons. This is an opportunity for district patrons to address either topics directly relevant to the business of the district or items on the current board agenda. All comments must be directed to the president or vice president of the board or presiding officer. Individuals will be given three minutes to present ideas. Anybody here tonight? Nope, okay. Moving on, we will move on to action items, business by consent. Do we have any discussion or motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Rosa?
Second.
Second by Rocky. All in favor? Six-zero. Okay, we can move on to approve the owner's representative agreement, Phase Two. Ms. Mengers.
Okay, attached you have the amendment for the owner's rep, the contract that we approved a while back. But Phase Two really covers all the construction. I probably should let Tucker speak about it, but it is construction, design, warranty period. Tucker, I'll let you add on a little bit to that.
Yeah, so the first phase that we're working on right now is the onboarding process for the contractors and they interview next week. And this is Phase Two, which is in the contract and is outlined A through E, all the work that goes on once, now that the bond is passed and we're actually moving forward. So that's the lion's share of the work over the next three years. It goes through probably about September to October of 2028.
So yes, this covers, he will represent us and coordinate all of this for the next three years. So we would recommend approval.
Okay, Kristy.
So there's no additional expenses, this?
The only way that if there are, there is a clause in there that if you want to ask for additional services, I have an hourly rate in there. And it would be something that if there was addition, there are some ideas about some additional things to do, but it would be a cost benefit that would be weighed by the facility committee and then they would bring it up here to you guys to vote. So it is fixed for that scope of work.
And just out of curiosity, is this a percentage? It's an odd amount, so.
Yeah, so it does sort of fall around a percent, but the way that I work it up is I basically do a weekly, what I think the weekly commitment will be for each month based on the schedule that has been approved by everybody now that's been looking at it. And when we use an hourly rate and that's the number that comes out, we don't, it's not a percentage-based calculation. And so we've provided all that backup to the facility team on how we've come up with our fee, so.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Moved by Rosa.
I'll second.
Second by Rocky. All in favor? Six-zero. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to approve course proposals. Ms. Bell.
Okay, good evening. The high school is asking to add two additional classes for programming next year. So I'm going to start with the financial literacy. As you recall, that is a graduation requirement by the State Board of Ed that you also adopted as part of our graduation requirements. Our current sophomores are under the obligation to take this course. And it is expected that a majority of them would take that next year as juniors. So that way we have a little bit of extra time in case a student weren't to pass or they move in. We still have an extra year to get that requirement under their belt before they have the opportunity to graduate. So financial literacy is a replacement for personal finance. We used to teach a personal finance class in some capacity. The biggest difference would be that we're going to make sure that they have some investing and some saving outside. It really beefed that section up compared to what we were teaching in personal finance. But we will be bringing that curriculum map. They're working on it now because we already knew we had to teach this class. But we'll be bringing that here in the, over the winter sometime here or early spring. So they're almost done with that curriculum map. But we are asking for approval for that course. And then the second course that we would be asking for approval is a contemporary math course. And I just want to kind of refresh your memory, the Kansas Board of Regents really looked at course math offerings. And remember, I talked to you about, there's a small percentage of college degrees that really require college algebra. And so they identified a tiered system where depending on the type of degree students are getting at the university would determine the level of math that they would be required to take. So some of the degrees will require college algebra, some will require contemporary math, and some of them will require elementary statistics. Washburn University is the university we partner with to do dual credit. So what that means is our high school students get to take college algebra as a high school student and they get a math credit for that. They also get a college credit. They're dual crediting that experience. Washburn is getting ready to put online contemporary math as an offering for dual credit. So our kids, if they're not ready for college algebra or don't need college algebra, could still get a college math credit by taking contemporary math. And so we are wanting to pursue that relationship with Washburn University with your permission for the course. After Washburn gets that all set up and we get that going, Washburn really dictates what that course content looks like. But we will request that the teachers put that into a map. So that map might come a little bit later, maybe even into next year. But we're asking to go ahead and get started with making that partnership with Washburn and offering that in the spring for next school year. So I will entertain questions about either one of those two courses.
Is there an entrance exam for the contemporary math, like the college algebra?
There are requirements for enrollment. They either have to take, get a math ACT of 19 or higher. They have to have a high school GPA of 3.0 or higher. Or a C or better in the second semester of Algebra II. So we have to demonstrate that they have some math aptitude before they're getting a chance to enroll that. And they have to pass a placement test.
Okay, I think it's great because I know some students can't pass that college algebra exam. So this opens up opportunities for them.
Yes, and our teachers do a really good job of working with those kids that don't pass those exams by allowing them to take an intermediate algebra or maybe one of these classes to make sure that they're ready to go if they so choose to get into college algebra later. So this would still be a really good stepping stone if college algebra was something they would need to take later on. So I think it's a really good compromise for a lot of our students.
Rosa?
I have a couple of questions. Can you please refresh my memory about the other math that you had mentioned with the statistics?
Yeah, it's called elementary statistics.
Okay, and that is going to be different because I see that this one has statistics in it. So this is going to be a higher level of statistics?
This one will be a more broad level of statistics. And then if they're taking elementary statistics, that's the focus. It's all statistic concepts. So they'll do a unit or two on statistics, but they'll do a lot of other things. So they won't get near in-depth for this particular class.
So the elementary statistics will be more?
Be a heavier lift in statistics, yes.
And is that also a dual credit or no?
Washburn doesn't have that one developed yet, so I don't know if they're going to offer that as a dual credit, but they're not ready to offer it as of right now as a dual credit class.
And how, well, I mean, I know you guys do a good job, but as a parent, I would be very confused as to which math class my student should take. So how will we be able to know that they're receiving that correct information, especially since parents have to sign that paper and changing all of the math now? I would be confused. If I had a student in the high school with the different types of math, so I want to make sure we're going to be able to make sure we're going to be able to communicate that clearly to our parents who are signing off on that information.
Yes, so we will work on making sure that's communicated. A lot of that goes into like their student-led conferences where they're talking about their individual plans of study and what courses are they taking next, and our teachers will kind of give them some guidance on that as well. And then we also could send some information home as we get the enrollment stuff done, just to kind of inform parents of a new tradition. Once our teachers are well-versed in that, that's going to be our biggest information outlet where teachers could then have conversations with parents as questions arise. And then our last conduit would be through the counseling department, that our counselors would talk with parents if they had any questions about which one would be the most appropriate. But we have a course guide that will have a description very much like this in there, and we will work as, as we know more about what colleges are going to accept for what degrees, we can work to beef that up as well, to provide more information about if you're going into these career fields, you might want this class. That's really what that individual plan of study process is really supposed to, to work with students so they know, have a good idea of knowing.
Will the Washburn information be ready by conferences, by the student-led conferences that take place in February, or is that not? I don't know if that's going to be too soon because I know you mentioned spring and those student-led conferences are in February, so how much time does Washburn have to get that information over to you?
So for this specific class, they'll, they have this one ready to go.
Okay.
The elementary statistics one, they won't have done by conferences, which is why we're not bringing it to you for the school year, for this upcoming school year. But we will have this ready to go, and I'll work with Mr. West to craft something to send out to families that are getting close to that. We wouldn't need to send that out to freshmen yet, but we'll work on getting that out before that they, before the year they're enrolling for this class.
Yeah, and I remember last year, the, the student-led conferences seemed to bring in a higher number of students coming and parents coming to conferences, but I know it's not nearly as a high percentage as it is in the fall. And so I just want to make sure that parents really understand what that looks like for their student, and the students understand the differences too.
And I can work with Tiffany at Mrs. Makers to also put something in the district newsletter here in the spring, right before enrollment.
That's a great idea.
So we'll work on getting that out.
I mean, I know you guys have probably all thought about all of these things and, but yeah, I just, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a touchy subject for parents, and it's a touchy subject for us as educators because what we don't want to do is say, well, your kid really should go this route, because we want kids to have choices and we want them to pick and not see it as, well, my kid's not smart enough for college algebra, so they need to take that. That's not what this is about. This is about, if you're going to spend college tuition money on a class, we want it to be a class that's going towards a degree your kid is wanting to go into. And so we want to be purposeful with the classes that our kids are taking, and that's really the biggest message we have to get out to families.
Yeah, and there's parents and students especially that are very interested in their GPAs still remaining high so that they can get the honors cords and things like that, and so I just want to make sure that we're relaying the right messages to them so that they don't see this as harmful or as negative in any sort of way, but so they're also making the right decisions.
We will do our best.
I'm, I, I know you will, so thank you for answering all my questions.
Yes.
Any other questions for Ms. Bell?
Yes, Christina. The discussion with Rosa just brought this up to my mind. Since it's through Washburn, are there credits pretty much accepted by all the other Kansas universities? So if they get something through Washburn and they choose to go to a different university, they have a good shot at that transferring?
Yes, it'll transfer, it just determines on how they accept it. So for example, my daughter's a senior, she took twenty-five college credit hours, of which only six of those actually count towards the degree that she's going towards. But she can count those as elective hours, they're just not going to count as the social studies credits or, or whatever. So they will be accepted in pretty much anywhere in Kansas, we won't have a problem with that, it's just depending on what field, which is why we're offering this, because we want to make sure that if kids are taking this, that we want to make sure it's going towards a field of study that they're interested in, and this helps us to start to differentiate those options for kids.
Christina, just my son graduated with twenty-four credit hours and only one class transferred as an elective, all the others went four. So it really does depend on the school.
And the school of study.
And knowing, if you know what school you're going to, that helps. You decide what classes to take, so.
Any other questions? All right. And so we need a motion to approve the course proposals.
Still moved.
Oh. Moved by Christina, second by Kristi, all in favor? All right, six zero. Now we will move on to approve health curriculum maps, and this is Mrs. Bell and Mrs. Hammer. Okay. Maybe? It's being slow right now. All right, we'll just skip on to that page then. We are bringing the health curriculum maps for you this evening. First, as we always do, we want to recognize the work that has been done among many staff members in the district for the health maps that you're going to be considering tonight. We had our seventh grade team made of Carolyn Gonzalez, Danielle Mott, and Kyle Cannard. Our eighth grade team, which was Robin Scarlett, Laura Curry, and Shannon Swift. And our ninth grade team, which was Danielle Phaler, Russell Hampton, and John Oshel, along with our diligent and expert curriculum map writers of Jody Medina and Shannon O'Connor, who assist in every single one of those meetings.
And although there are no elementary maps in front of you, we felt it was important to talk about health and really think about the physical, mental, and social pieces of health and the standards that we have for them, but to remind everyone that many of those health standards are considered connectors at the elementary level. We might have a unit in PE to talk about nutrition, although that is not a standard that we have a course for, it is a connector to the PE standards that we have there. Many of these others are how to make healthy choices. We talk about that in various aspects, but including our counseling curriculum and their maps. But we are very intentional about some certain health topics that, at specific grade levels in the elementary. And so you'll see fourth, fifth, and sixth grade are listed for our maturity videos and units for health. Fourth grade girls have the girls' maturity unit, fifth grade boys have a boys' maturity unit, and then we have sixth grade boys and girls, there is a co-ed maturity video. Trust me, it's in separate locations still, but it is the same information received by both audiences. Later on, those topics then turn into courses, and so our maturity units are in eighth grade healthy lifestyles, as well as eighth and ninth grade teen topics. And part of those units include human growth and development, and starting in July first 2025, there was a house bill that went into effect that requires school districts to include a fetal development presentation as a part of the curriculum for any course that addresses human growth, human development, or human sexuality. So we do, and we have selected, videos with each of those courses that were mentioned on this health slide, that will be shared with parents being able to view them at the elementary level so that they, that happens at the secondary as well, so that parents know what messages and have an opt-out option if so choosing, but we wanted to make sure to follow that legislation that is in front of us.
All right, so after we look at the whole picture of the district, we brought four curriculum maps to you, three different ones, two of them are replicated, and so I'll explain that in just a second. We're going to start with seventh grade health. In our seventh grade health, they really spend time talking about that health triangle that Mrs. Hammer just showed, that talks about social, physical, emotional, mental health. They're going to talk about influences on person's health, hygiene, tips how to stay clean and disease-free, they're going to talk about daily exercise and sleep amounts, and then they're going to spend the rest of their nine-week quarter talking about the body system, specifically the skeletal, the muscular, the nervous, the circulatory, respiratory, and digestive systems. So they get to learn the bone names, the muscle system, how all of the, the circulatory system works, they, they get a crash course in all of those things. And they also talk about communicable and non-communicable disease that affect each of those systems. That's a quarter class, so they get nine weeks of that. Then in eighth grade, they get to choose an elective class, and very, several of them choose healthy lifestyles. This is different than the teen topics class because this has a, an exercise component to it, where kids get to do workouts and things versus just looking at health. So Mrs. Curry teaches this class, she goes over skin and a lot of areas that deal with skin, such as skin cancer, burns, acne, all of the fun things middle schoolers need to know about skin. And then we talk about cardiovascular disease, cancer, nutrition, eating disorders, they do workouts all semester long, and then they have a human sexuality unit that we get parents that, that's in the enrollment screen, that parents can choose to opt out at that time. And they talk about puberty and anatomy, reproduction, and pregnancy, sexual abuse, human growth and development, and childbirth. So those are the areas that they cover in that human sexuality unit. It will be the same in the other class that they, that we take for teen topics. You have two versions of the teen topics map, they're exactly the same except for one of them says eighth grade and one of them says ninth grade, because as you recall, you approved that we could teach the teen topics class in the eighth grade instead of over the summer, virtually, we were going to do it in person at the eighth grade level. So if a student chooses to take the teen topics class, they're also are going to talk about that health triangle some more and dimensions of wellness. They're going to talk about social health, mental health, physical, that triangle specifically. They're going to talk about alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, specifically, they're making sure to hit fentanyl and some of the more common drugs that, that we find through the communities that care survey. Then there's a first aid unit where kids are taught about first aid and CPR, AEDs, they get to practice with those. We bought all brand-new mannequins last year and equipment for them. We retrained all of our teachers on current CPR and AED practices. And then they do digital citizenship, and then the same human sexuality unit that I mentioned, the, the other teachers teach as well. So that is the health curriculum, the four maps that you have in front of you, and I'll entertain any questions you might have.
I have a question. So I was skimming through here, and there's a lot of really great stuff in here, but one thing that I was looking for is, is there a point in which, in, in any of these, that the students are exposed to the career pathways in healthcare, or, I mean, even just from a, here are the professionals that you may seek care from in these instances, like, I was thinking of dermatologists when you were mentioning all the skin conditions, but as well as here are potential career pathways you might want to explore? But as well as here are potential career pathways you might want to explore?
Letter, it'll all be posted. I'm sure we can link some of that information for parents, too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My next question, unless you have a question related to that. Going back to the seventh, seventh and eighth, maybe, maybe it's the next one. There we go. When you're talking about emotional, mental, and emotional health, and I know we have the questions on the, what is that, Community That Cares? Is that going to be, is there going to be any discussion about self-harm and suicide in those? And I know that that's a scary topic to add, but I'm just curious if that is going to be part of the mental-emotional health section?
The specific reference to suicide would be done in the units that our counselors are providing all students. They go in and do lessons in the, the seventh grade and the eighth grade. And that is a primary topic that they're doing in there. So that is not necessarily referenced in these particular maps. They do talk about, I went in and observed a teen topics class prior to them writing these maps. And they talk about how students deal with emotional issues like bullying, harassment, cyberbullying, those things, and, and what they can do for help. And so they're going to get some of that during that unit. But specifically, suicide prevention will be directly taught through our counseling.
And so the self-harm would also be through the suicide or through this?
It would be a little bit of both. It'd be depending on the, the suicide ideation when they talk about that. Some of the, the signals to friends is you're noticing your friend is self-harming themselves. And, and here's a time that you might want to report that as maybe they're not being very safe and that you're concerned about them. So they'll talk a little bit about that. And then I will make sure that I mention that in that mental health for the current maps that we're getting ready to implement for next year.
And then does the, will there be information included about Family Service and Guidance Center or the app that we already have be provided as part of those preventions?
They have access to that, to our current mental health, like the sevens. Dr. O'Brien can probably help me with that. But they do have some of that information, and we do share that with students. I don't know if that's through the counseling lessons or if it will be through this one, but it is covered in one of those two areas.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry. Well, this is near and dear to my heart because I've been in healthcare since I was 15. So I knew I wanted to do healthcare since I was a kid. Second, the ATOD. I do have an adult son who has struggled with drug addiction. And he is very open. He's already a year into recovery and very open to be a speaker if you needed someone to come in and speak with students of how not to live your life and how to work your way back out of that.
All right, I will share that information with the group.
I think this is phenomenal. So thank you for indulging me in all my questions. But I'm really excited about having some of these hard discussions with our students, especially since the Community That, Communities That Care survey has focused on some of these things. And I'm just such an advocate for prevention, but also getting the information out. So that's why I had so many questions is I just wanted to know how this was going to work. And so I appreciate your work and Ms. O'Connor's, your work, too. So thank you.
What we found in this process is that many of these areas were already being taught. We were already teaching a lot of the teen topics topics in our eighth grade health classes. That was not a hard sell to those teachers. Because when they looked at it, they're like, we teach almost all of this except for the first aid. We can add that. And that was doable and manageable. And so our, our teachers just innately have just done the right things without necessarily this guidance recently. And so I'm just proud of them. And now we've codified it. We've put it down in writing that this is what you will be doing in an updated version. And I'm just excited about the progress they made. And that committee worked really hard and quickly because we wanted to make sure we could get the resources to them that they wanted to actually start implementing some of it next semester. So we're hoping to get that approved and move forward with that.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you, Ms. Medina, Dr. O'Brien, and to everybody that helped. I know that there's a lot of work that goes into these. So I would entertain a motion to approve the health curriculum maps.
So moved?
Moved by Rosa, second by Lauren, all in favor? Six-zero, okay. We will now move on, if you have any voice left, to the approve health curriculum resources. Again, Ms. Spell and Ms. Summer.
Okay, so I didn't pull this up, I apologize, so I should have done that. But we are asking for approval in your board packet. You would have seen that we are asking for two textbooks. The seventh grade would be Savis, which if that looks familiar to you is the same vendor that we chose for our math curriculum. That would be classroom sets of textbooks and resources for our seventh grade. And again, that is primarily, so they have a resource for the, the bones, circulatory system, that small unit that they do. So that would get those teachers, those resources for kids to use when they're learning about those body systems. The second, and that's for 11,000. The second request is for the teen topics. So we would get classroom sets of those textbooks for the middle school and then also the high school. And that will also include a six-year digital license for the teacher so that they can get some of the resources to use with their students. And that would be for 15,800 for a total of $26,857.21. So we are recommending approval of those two resources.
I would make a motion to approve the expenses.
Okay, any, second, okay. Nope, any, okay. Motion by Rosa, second by Christina, all in favor? Six-zero, all right. And that, thank you ladies very much.
Thank you.
And this brings us to our discussion items. First, we have our superintendent's report, Ms. Meggers.
Okay, a couple things. You're probably going to have bond updates for the next three years. I feel like this is a constant, ongoing process, which is good. We are currently, we're meeting with Mr. Urick. He has been gathering some schedules and ideas from other districts, other middle schools that have six-eight models. And so we're going to meet with him and really start hammering out what scheduling could look like, what electives, curriculum, some of that. So we'll keep you updated and share some options. And then the architects are setting up meetings with each building that, or with three of our buildings, some of the first ones on the list to start, to start that discussion and start really narrowing things down. And then we are interviewing construction companies next week, so we'll get, get somebody on board there. And then I mentioned we were starting the Capital Outlay walkthrough tours. And we are just, we'll finish the last one this week. And we'll get a Capital Outlay list finalized until you, probably early January. We really want to take into account all the bond projects. So thus the reason it's a little bit behind this year, but we, it's so much easier to walk through the buildings and we can look at things and say, that's part of the bond, or that's not. And we could address needs, or we want to wait on something. So that, that is coming, we are working on all of it. And the only, the other big thing I wanted to say is a big thank you to our bus drivers and to Micah and his crew, maintenance and custodians. And for parents, students, and staff for your patience today. We have been watching that weather. We had a little more snow than was predicted, and it just kept coming and coming. And so we know we had delays and late arrivals. We were just trying to get everybody here safely, here and home safely. So we just wanted to say thank you to everyone involved. And hopefully you have a little bit nicer weather the rest of the week. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Meggers. We will now move on to questions and comments from the Board of Education members. Christina?
I just want to, since we've been talking about health, one of my neighbors came to me over the holiday weekend and talked about the Rosie applesauce. I guess we get actual red dye and put it into our applesauce because she talked to, now I'm Tara. I'm blanking on her name. And it was removed, and then it came back in. And in the discussion, she told me that it was actual red dye that gets added to the applesauce. And so her son is sensitive to red dye. And so I didn't know if the Department of Agriculture, who does the food program, if they demand certain things that we have to do, or if we as a school district can say, you know, we don't want to do red dye in our food because it's added at our level. And so I know this is a weird thing to bring up at a school board meeting, but we're talking about health. And so I don't know what direction to go with this. If it should go to food and nutrition and see if there's some regulation. And if the school board has some option to override some decision that they make to put dye in the kids' foods. So I'm just bringing this up as a conversation I had over the holiday weekend. And if there's something that we as the board or what direction we could go with this, so. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Any other com, Rosa?
Gosh, I'm sorry, I feel like I've spoken a whole lot tonight. But thank you so much for answering all my questions, I appreciate it. But also kudos to the Elf Cast and the Orchestra. That was so much fun to watch. And Orchestra, they just do an amazing job, and they're hidden down there and nobody sees them. But they do a great performance and as, oh, who said it? Mr. Dial, thank you. I was like, Mr. Urick was not here. But, you know, talking about the students, the younger students who participated in the Elf Show and, and the high school students who worked so hard with them, it was great to see that. And so congratulations. And then Tiffany, you've done such a really good job of getting information out on Instagram or Facebook. And that's amazing. And so when I was seeing the students who had to do their own prep for their turkey and their mashed potatoes and things like that, I was so happy that you shared that last week and thought what a great idea that was. And I don't know who the teachers were because I won't remember their names. But how much fun that was for those students to create their meal and then go and sit down. And I just loved it, and I saw it on the photos that you shared. And so thank you for doing that. You didn't share those? Somebody did then because I saw them on our, on our USD 450 page. So I just thought that was really cool. And so just great job. And if you didn't share them, great job for making sure somebody shared them, so thank you.
It definitely, you know, helps the schools be able to manage their social media. And they do a great job of that. They did have high schoolers, they came up and asked, or they were asked whether they were taking the school.
Awesome. So that's all I have to say.
Just an addendum, Tara Cox, I'm so sorry, I was having a TIA.
I will just echo Rosa's comments about Elf. I also think it was really fun to see how the elementary students were so excited to get to go because they could see their classmates. So that was really, really fun. And I know we're getting ready to really get into all of our winter sports and activities. So I'm just looking forward to see how all of our kids do with those things as well. So any other comments, questions? If not, I would move that we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under coma. We will return to this regular session at 8:10 PM. Can I have a second? Second by Rosa, all in favor? All right, six-zero. And we need Ms. Meggers and Mr. Hirsch.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second, motion by Kristy, second by Rosa. All in favor?